Call out our August 20, August 12, 2024 City Council meeting in order. Thank you to all those who are joining us here in the audience. I see, do I see any members of the school board? I know I see Dr. Collins, Superintendent, and some of his leadership team. Can any members of the school board or the leadership of the Cumberland County Schools, if they could stand real quickly, we welcome you. Thank you all for coming this evening. And as we call this to order, we always begin with the invocation. We'll ask Ms. Christie Conway of the Cross Point Church if she could come to the podium and lead us in our invocation, if she's here. Yes, ma'am, there you are. All right, and if we could all stand for the prayer, immediately following the prayer, if we could repeat the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'm so sorry. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mary, for having me speak this evening and to the other council members. Respectfully, I only know of one name to call on for prayer. God, we come to you to ask for your continued guidance as we come together to support our community. Even though we come from different walks of life, we all have one common goal, which is to keep our streets safe and to cover those who are less fortunate than ourselves and to assist those who are re-entering our community so that they can have a foundation to stand on for the prevention of recidivism. God, you are the only one who can help us come together on common ground as we serve those in your name. We all play different instruments to play the beautiful sound of oneness. One band equals one sound of hope that opens doors and dreams that can come true. God, we ask that you continue to use who you want to use to do your work, and only by your name can this happen. Thank you for allowing us time to sit together and brainstorm to tell the stories of succession. God, it is only by your will that this be done. We thank you and we honor you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Ms. Christie. I remembered you from the coffee with the mayor. I know, don't want to put you on the spot. I always give a few moments if you take it, just to tell us a little bit about yourself and your church, maybe Cross Point Church.
Yes, my name is Christie Conaway, and I am the owner of Broken that assists those, the unhoused community in our area and those that are coming from incarceration. I belong to a church, a wonderful church here in Cumberland County, Cross Point, located on Hope Mills Road. I do apologize.
You're doing great.
But I am not a pastor, and I do apologize. I just wanted, I did not know what it meant, but God is doing some things through me, and I'm appreciative.
You did a great job.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, that's it. Thank you. Well, thank you. We appreciate that. Thank you for the work that you're doing in the community as well. All right, councils, we move to announcements. I'll go to Mayor Pro Tim, who has a special announcement, followed by Councilmember DJ Hare.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two things to announce, and the first thing that I would like to announce is that it is someone's birthday today from our staff, and that is Assistant City Manager Kelly Oliveira, and I just wanted to wish her a happy birthday from all of us. So I hope you've had a great day, and thank you for everything you do for us. The next thing that I would like to have an announcement about is on September 7th, the Ninth Annual Suicide Awareness Run will be happening in Festival Park, and it is 335 Ray Avenue. So for those of you that do not know about the Suicide Run, it is a group headed by veterans that take care and do great outreach for people for suicide awareness, and in our community, we know that that is a major thing going on. And they partner with our police department, and they, they are very involved with our Gold Star Mothers, so they've done a lot of great things for our community, and each year it is very interesting to see how far they grow and grow. I went for the first time two years ago and will never miss it again. So it starts on September 6th, that night, where the Gold Star families have their dinner. Then they have the Man 22 Star meet and greet, and the Gold Star family's escort on September 7th is at 8:00, and if you can wake up early and watch them come down to Festival Park, it is a sight that you will be so proud to be a part of Fayetteville, North Carolina, where all our heroes live. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Hare.
Thank you, Mayor, and what an exciting month, month of August that we have here in Fayetteville. August 17th, there's going to be a, a boys camp in honor of our late Dr. Herbert W. Vic, which used to be my doctor as a child. That will be August the 17th, and that will be at the Smith Recreation Center, and we'd love for you to, to participate. And that information is at the Rec Center if you would like to register to participate in a boys camp. Our annual Eumogia Festival, happy to announce, will be on August the 24th from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and that is at 1520 Slater Avenue, right here in the all-American city of Fayetteville, and we're asking everyone to come out. It's a big community day, a big culture day. This particular, this particular festival, we will be celebrating our elders, so that's going to be on August the 24th from 10:00 to 5:00 a.m. at Seabrook Park, and also there will be vitals taken there with Cape Fear Valley, so you're all are welcome. This is another big one, Mayor. This is another big one, Mayor. I wanted to share that I left it for last. I'm very excited about this. I'm the liaison for our senior committee here, Boards and Commission Committee here, and the AARP seniors are having a, a fashion show. I don't know how I got pushed into being a model. I don't, it just kind of slipped in there.
Oh, yeah?
But, yeah, they got me off guard. I thought I was going to be the emcee. They said, no, Mr. Hare, you take over that. So it's going to be a great, great day. It's going to be a fashion show. Some of our senior ladies, they're called the Sassy Stepping Seniors, are going to be stepping that day. I was able to corner a few people to be models, and I did get another member up here to be a model, and that's my, that's my brother down on the end. We hang out a lot.
Who, Mario?
Councilmember Thompson, that he is going to also be a model. This will take place on August the 23rd from 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. AARP Chapter 855, and it's also going to be at the Bill Chris Center. And if you, those of you that follow me on social media, it's already there if you want to do that. Now, if I can just do this one parting thing that I like about this, all the, all the funds, because it's $20 a ticket, all the funds that are going to be taken up, let me tell you what this great, great group does. It helps seniors, it helps maybe some families that have a little lack on food, they need some food. Let's just say your rent is a little short. There's a number of things that this group uses their resources for, and I consider it an honor to be their emcee and model on August the 23rd. All announcements that I have given, you can see them on my social media page, DJ Hare, and I hope you will participate and buy a ticket. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Hare, and you and Councilman Thompson and the Sassy Seniors. I look forward to that. Do have a bit of a sad note, and I know Councilmember Green may kill me for saying this, but please keep her in your thoughts and prayers at the loss of her mother, as well as our city clerk, Pam McGill, who also lost her mother this week. So please keep both of those members of our team in your prayers and their families. With that, we will move to recognition. We have some more happier news, some lighter news. We have had the privilege to partner with the Cumberland County Schools and Dr. Collins and his team. The City of Fayetteville has hired nine high school interns through the ICON program, and I would ask that all of the participants, if you would, please meet me at the podium.
Yeah. Oh, Mr. Clip. All right, first we have Mr. Aiden Hayes, who worked in our IT department. By the way, Mr. Hayes, this was his second year with us. He came back. Then we have Ms. Sabrina Scriven, and she worked in our finance department. Next is Ms. Harley Wilson, who worked over in Economic and Community Development. Next, we have Ms. Molly Roberts, who worked at our airport. Next, we have Genesis Ortiz Leon, who worked in our Transit Department. She's not here, okay. And Mr. Sebastian Mendez, who also worked at Transit. Ms. Ruby Ratley, who worked at Human Relations. Mr. Kenneth Williams, who worked in our Legal Department, City Attorney's Office.
That's my new Facebook friend. Good job, sir.
And we also had Ms. Dagger Aloka, who is not able to be with us tonight as well. But Ms. Aloka actually created a video. She worked over in Marketing and Communications, and she created this video that I'd like to share with you.
ICON to me is opportunity, excitement, helpful, realistic expectations. I am Sarah Viatraga. I am Cumberland County Schools High School Work Coordinator. I work for the Career Technical Education, and one of my main projects is ICON. ICON is our internship program that allows students to work for four to six weeks during the summer in paid internships, where they are being able to apply the knowledge that they've learned inside of the classroom to real-world experiences.
I'm Molly Roberts. I'm 16 years old. I attend Grace Creek High School, and I'm currently working in the Fayetteville Regional Airport. I wanted to participate in ICON because a job doesn't work out for me with my busy schedule. I'm in marching band, I'm in FBLA, I'm in Battle of the Books. It goes on and on. It gave me a chance to get to do something without having to fully commit to something for a whole summer, which I can't do. My advice would be just try it. It's only six weeks. You hate it? It's only six weeks. It's not the end of the world, but it's a really great experience.
My name's Harley Wilson. I'm 15, and I go to Massey Hill Classical High School, and I'm currently working in the Economic and Community Development Department. ICON was a chance to see more of like the global real world. I've had one job before this, but it didn't last very long, so seeing how like actual offices work has like been really beneficial and has helped me like visualize my future better, because it's given me something to compare like my ideas and my expectations to. I wasn't really looking for a job, and I hadn't like done any research into other summer internships, so this coming up for me was, quite frankly, just easier, and then also I felt it would give me like a wide array of things to choose from.
My name is Aiden Hayes. I'm 17 years old, and I work in the IT Department at City of Fayetteville. ICON is an experience for me, a learning experience, and it's also like fun over the summer. It's a way for me to get out the house, because majority of the time during the summer, it was besides like hanging out with friends, I feel like I'm not really accomplishing much during the summer, so ICON is a nice experience to go through. It's made me feel very welcome, and with this being my second year at ICON, I'm very glad to be here again and to work with City of Fayetteville again. I would say probably the biggest piece of advice I can, can give is to really be serious about your first interview with whatever company that you are interviewing with, especially making sure that you have a good-looking resume, up to as best as you can make it, and to really feel confident.
My name is Jackie Abbott. I'm a Community Development Specialist in charge of nonprofit capacity building here in Economic and Community Development. So to me, the ICON program is an awesome way for young people to get experience in a career that they're thinking about, or a career that they might not have ever thought about, but could potentially be a good fit for them. So ICON is really an amazing opportunity. So this year, our intern Harley is really taking the lead on a pretty major research project. She is comparing all of the metropolitan areas in the South Atlantic states and figuring out what are their community development departments doing different than us. We're so proud of her. Anybody who's considering having an ICON intern should definitely do it. It's really a great mirror tool for you as a leader and as a supervisor. Not only does it make you take a hard look at your own leadership skills, but it really makes you take a hard look at your communication skills and, and see the places that you may be lacking, and it gives you a, an opportunity to improve.
My name's Lauren Beimer, and I'm the Marketing and Communications Director. So what I've noticed changed about the ICON program was twofold. One is with myself. I'm more informed this time, so I walked into this year having a plan and having an understanding of what would better be suited for the intern that participated in the program. On the flip side of that, I've seen growth in the intern that we had from last year, and the growth and development of that individual, being more responsible, being more mature, and, and being a better employee, a better intern for the department. I wanted to participate in ICON because it's a structured program, and it's been in place for several years, and there's a system and a method to their madness. And so being able to participate in that, I knew that I wouldn't be on my own trying to coach, mentor, teach individuals. I would have assistance from the ICON program and from Cumberland County Schools to help me along in the process. I think every director should take this opportunity if it's offered to them. It's not only a wonderful opportunity to bring young, fresh ideas into your department, but it's also a very rich and fulfilling opportunity for you to, to help pass along information, to help individuals grow and develop, and it, it helps you see opportunities where you may not have seen them before. So I, I think every director should absolutely take this opportunity to participate.
All right, I'm Deontay Watson, and I am the Interim Airport Director at the Fayetteville Regional Airport. ICON, to me, is a way for the airport to engage with the community and educate our leaders of tomorrow. There, there is a lot of talent, unique talent within our school systems here in Fayetteville, and I, I have a passion for aviation, and I enjoy sharing that enthusiasm with others. So ICON was introduced to us by the Human Resources Department, and after being briefed, it had my attention as it only makes sense to go with ICON interns.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Clip, and thank you to Cumberland County Schools. Thank you to these great students, these interns, for participating, and we love to have you on the team, and we certainly look forward to you returning, those, those of you who will still be here. But you know, these young people could have been anywhere this summer, and they were at work doing something positive, and I think that deserves another round of applause. So thank you. And, Mr. Clip, did you say one of the interns did the video? Where's, where's that person? Wow, that was great work. That was very professional looking, so great work. All right, so council, we'll move. I have a proclamation that I want to meet these guys who have been doing a lot in this community over the years. I call them Q and Sean, but they, the official name is, is Dr. Sundet Morris and Mr. Dr. La Bumba. QO, or Q, can I, can you meet me at the podium so we can make a presentation to you? These two gentlemen are barbers, the Barber Kings. They've done Cut My City. They do a lot of, of community-based services. They, they are professional barbers and stylists, but they render a lot of their service to our community, so wanted to just show a token of appreciation, guys. Well, guys, I'd like to just give a, a small token of appreciation, so I prepared a proclamation on behalf of myself and the City Council, just acknowledge the hard work that you've done for many, many years in this community. And it reads as follows, "Whereas Cut My City has demonstrated outstanding commitment to the community through various outreach programs and initiatives. Whereas Cut My City is a nonprofit organization dedicated to serving low-income and underserved communities by providing free haircuts and school supplies to those in need. And whereas Cut My City was founded 20 years ago by Dr. Morris and Dr. La Mumba QO, who began to provide haircuts to homeless individuals and low-income children," I know you'll get me later after this Q. "And whereas the mission of Cut My City is to boost self-esteem, provide a sense of dignity to those who may not have access to basic grooming services. Now therefore, I am Mitch Culver, Mayor of the City of Fayetteville, North Carolina, behalf of the City Council and the 208,000 citizens we represent, do hereby proclaim, honorably proclaim that August the 12th in the year of 2024 is Cut My City Day, and is witnessed to set my hand and cause the great seal of the City of Fayetteville to be affixed this fifth day of August 2024." Thank you, guys.
I just want to say thank you. Many of you may not know, I've been watching them for several years. They not only serve our community, but they also serve our country, so I just wanted to just highlight that, and I do want to give you guys the opportunity to kind of tell a little bit about what your organization, your organization does, and also how can people follow you and how can they support you in any kind of way.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Cut My City, it was created here in Fayetteville, North Carolina, and the reason for it is because we saw very, a lot of single-parent moms and dads that couldn't afford to pay for the services. So we created an ecosystem that allowed people to get free services, and as people donate to the organization, we were able, we are able now to pay barbers and students to take, get credit hours, so they can have a way where we can feed the, the system back into the community and allow the, the person that of need to receive the services that is granted to them. It took us a couple of years to really put this organization together and really learn how to really create a 501(c)(3) and really learn the logistics. Dr. Sundet and myself, we work really closely within the states of the United States, and we started traveling internationally, and we started seeing the need for the services elsewhere. So we reached out to other, collaborated with different community, community leaders in the countries, and we take the program there too as well to represent the United States. All I just ask is if you can, you can go to cutmycity.org, and you can donate to it, and, and that, that, that funding is going to take care of the community and the communities and the people of need. You can reach us out at, right at 1019 Hope Mills Road. We have our own building there, and you can, if you feel like you just want to come by and look at the bus and look at what we do for our program and ask questions, you're more than welcome to come be at any given time, six days or five days a week, we are there, but the building is open seven days a week. Have a great day.
Thank you, guys, again, for your great work. Thank you, Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin. I think she submitted the request for the proclamation to acknowledge the great work that you guys are continuing to do. Councilors, we move out of the announcements and recognition, we'll move to 5.0, the City Managers Report. Mr. Hewitt.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. I'd say welcome back. This is your first regular meeting after our summer break. Over the summer, I know each of you have been busy, as have been city staff. I'm happy to report that we have received back the joint use agreement from Fort Liberty for the development of a sports complex at MacArthur Road, and we will be executing that agreement later this week. That will provide us an opportunity to move through the development of that park through 2029. So you'll be hearing a lot more about that in the coming months as we continue that exciting project. The other I would say, I think it's on your agenda for consent agenda and may generate some additional conversation as well. Based upon council's direction in July, the staff and the staff of the Cumberland County School Board have developed the two agreements, which are on your consent agenda, which will provide for one-year period. for a one-year period for school resource officers and traffic control officers, for the city to provide service to the 49 schools inside the city of Fayetteville city limits. And then the last one, even though I know that there are many people who in our community were impacted because of Tropical Storm Debbie, and I know that some of them may be on your agenda tonight to speak under the public forum, I would say that we were all somewhat fortunate and lucky that it was not the same level of disaster that we had in previous terms. But we do, the city staff will be reviewing our performance on that, as well as with the county, and we hope to continue to improve our operations. But I'd also then close in saying that anyone who has not signed up to receive our weekly newsletter that comes out every Friday from the City Manager's Office, please go to the City of Fayetteville's website, and you will see the link to sign up for that newsletter at the top of our homepage. That's the report, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Manager. All right, Council, moving to item 6.0, the approval of the agenda. If we can go to our pads, see Councilmember Honduras. All right, it's motion by Councilmember Honduras to approve the agenda, seconded by Councilmember, wow, are y'all voting, or is this motions? Seconded by Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin. All right, any discussion on the motion? All right, Council, I'll look to you for your votes. All right, Madam Clerk, that is unanimous, 10-0. Motion carries. Moving to the public forum. Per council policy, 120.9, this is a time that residents may have input and a voice in what goes on in their city. The public forum will last no longer than 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes each to address the City Council on issues related to the City of Fayetteville. No time will be yielded to any other speaker by another speaker. Individuals wishing to speak at tonight's public forum should have signed up with the office of the clerk no later than 5:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting. When a city clerk calls your name, please approach the podium. Please clearly state your name and residential address for the record. When the light located on the podium changes from green to yellow, it means you have 30 seconds remaining. When the light changes to red, it means your time has expired. Any remaining speakers on the public forum list that did not have an opportunity to address the City Council will have the option to have their name placed first at the beginning of the next scheduled council meeting for public forums. So with that, Madam Clerk, please call your first speaker.
Mayor, we have 12 speakers this evening. Our first speaker is Ms. Melissa Williams.
Good evening, Ms. Williams.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, fellow Fayettevillians. My name's Melissa Williams. I live at 1210 Morgan Street, just up the road in Haymout. So I didn't realize I only had 30 minutes, so I'm gonna edit this on the fly.
Three minutes.
Three minutes. Oh, I was wishful thinking. So I purchased my home in May of 2021. It's approximately 25 to 35 homes in an area that was previously pretty empty and blighted. So over the past two years, I've seen many improvements in the neighborhood. Homes are being remodeled. There's still new construction going up, very promising, which is why myself and a lot of people bought homes in that area. There's new developments. There's the Civil War Reconstruction History Center over on Myrover, and also the expansion of the Friendship House. So there's a lot of really good things going on in the neighborhood, which is why I felt compelled to address the council today regarding some issues that are threatening progress. A lot of blight. I take Bryan Street pretty much every day and Branson Street to go to work, and I'm seeing a lot of refuse, a lot of garbage, a lot of stuff sitting on the roads in unauthorized bins, which is why they're never getting picked up. I say this because there are a lot of rental properties in the area still, and what I am asking, particularly Mr. Davis, because you are my city councilman, but the council in general, is to hold these property, people that own these properties, these are investment properties, I would like for them to be held to the standard, just baseline cleanliness and maintenance and upkeep. People took a chance on this area. People spent a lot of money on these houses, which is good, not just for Haymout in general, but good for the city's tax base, yes?
Yes.
So I think it's in everybody's best interest to do that. So I'm looking for a response, a speedy response from the city. The other issue I have, so my house is on Morgan Street in this small development. As I stated earlier, the area has been empty for a while. It's a cut-through from Rayford to get to Robinson or Savoy Heights, which is directly behind my street. I'm asking for you guys to dead-end the street where it ends with Bryan. There's a weird intersection, really small area to egress in. It's been done on Hensdale. I'd like to see that happen too. I don't think that's asking too much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Chaleko Hurst.
Mr. Hurst, how you doing?
How you doing?
Yes, sir.
City Council and citizens, I'm gonna run through this right quick. We are in a unique time in this country, in this city, in this state. We have an individual that's still eligible to be on the ballot in all 50 states with 34 felonies. Let that sink in for the highest office in this country, they call the United States. If that's to be allowed, then every application in this country should have it stricken, like the City of Fayetteville, I think you struck that question from the city job application, I want to say about seven years ago. That means felons should be able to apply to work at the police department or anywhere else if this is allowed to take place. Also, the second point is the homeless housing situation. There must be a sense of urgency. At the close of this meeting, I ask and I implore those members of the City Council to drive down on Annan Grove Street and go behind the Valero gas station or anywhere in that area. Our citizens are suffering. The same sense of urgency that when houses are built in Fayetteville by Habitat of Housing, I've seen five houses go up within a week. Contact them, individuals. These citizens should not be sleeping on the doggone street through the summertime. Summer is almost over with. I want to know, with the funding that has been allotted to the Day Resource Center, why it's not open on the weekend? That's the homeless plight. Also, Dr. Countly, who just left, I owe him an apology, because I was under the impact that he received $75,000 even though the schools were failing, and it wasn't just for him, it's for his nine other members. Also, for whatever reason, churches, especially black churches, are failing these citizens. If you're not a member of certain churches, they're not allowing individuals who have 60% of those family members buried on their site to be buried there. I just ran into this issue two weeks ago at a particular black church here in Fayetteville, North Carolina, in Cumberland County. And lastly, also, the COVID rate for county staff members, not just the courthouse, not just school teachers, but anybody employed by the city and the county, is still there and is steadily rising. Please pay attention. Please protect our staff, family members, and the public. Thank you for your time and consideration. Have a great day.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Tina Jacobs. Ms. Tina Jacobs? Not present. Our next speaker is Ms. Rudlin Brown. Ms. Rudlin Brown? Not present. Our next speaker is Mr. John Gariuso.
Good evening, sir.
Evening, Mayor. Honorable members of the City Council, esteemed colleagues and valued members of our community, I stand before you today to advocate for the further employment of our Office of Community Safety, designed to support our emergency services and enhance the well-being of our citizens. Our city is experiencing an increased number of calls related to mental health crisis, substance abuse, and other challenges. These situations often place an immense strain on our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics who are not always equipped to handle the complexities of these crises effectively. It is imperative that we recognize the urgent need for specialized professionals to respond to these calls. A crisis intervention team, who would be comprised of peer support specialists, social workers, and trained first responders, who can provide necessary support and de-escalation techniques. This team would work collaboratively with our emergency services, offering immediate assistance and connecting individuals in crisis with the appropriate resources. By investing in a crisis intervention program, we are not only improving the efficiency of our emergency services response system, but also demonstrating our commitment to the health and safety of all our residents. The program will help to reduce the stigma surrounding mental health, promote early intervention, and ultimately prevent tragic outcomes. I urge this council to prioritize the development of this crisis intervention program, specifically under the Office of Community Safety. By allocating the necessary funds and resources, we can create a more compassionate and effective response system for those who are experiencing a crisis. Together, we can build a community where everyone feels supported and cared for. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mrs. Mae O'Callen.
Yeah, that's fine, Ms. O'Callen. He's with you, doing the same thing, yeah. Good evening, you all.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and honorable members of the council. Did not know I'd be speaking here. The bottom line is we're asking for assistance addressing a seeming governance between the state and the city, and that is at the road, Rayford Road, where it is east of Lake Bay Road. And so that's essentially a state road, which is Rayford Road, in which there is high traffic and continual accidents. We've had phenomenal support from the Fayetteville City Police there, addressing speeding issues and reckless driving. However, over the course of the six years that we've lived here, we've had two cars end up in our yard, taking down trees, taking down a fence. I've pulled a family out of a wrecked vehicle, and we just recently had a head-on about 150 feet up the road on Amigo Road, Amigo Drive. Additionally, what has happened recently is that this area has seen an influx of families, of families particularly in the Southampton Court area. So in the times between 7:00 a.m. and 10:00 a.m., you're seeing a lot of families actually cross Rayford Road. And then on the evenings between 1600 and 1800, it turns into a pretty traffic-filled area with a lot of people running each other off the road because you come from four lanes that simply address to two. Understanding it's a state road and that anything to slow down has to go through the state, we're asking the city, if they would, to look into this, because at this rate right now, with the increase of families going over the road, lack of sidewalks, the fact that we're seeing bicyclists leaving and riding up and actually having to walk bicycles because it's a slight incline up that road, we're looking at the high probability of an accident with serious repercussion. So again, asking the city to address that seam if possible. Thank you for your time.
And what end of Rayford Road is that, sir?
So that is, sir, that is from Lake Bay Road East on Rayford Road, or Lake Shore, I'm sorry, Lake Shore Drive.
Where the two lanes merge to one. It's like everyone's jockeying for positions. We sit on that corner. That house is...
It's District 5, sir.
Okay, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
All right.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Lizette Rodriguez.
Good evening, Ms. Rodriguez, how are you?
Hello, doing well. I'm here to speak about the incident that occurred with the FPD's K-9. I understand that council will be voting tonight to petition the court to release the body cam footage, and I fully support this motion, and I hope the council will side with the public's demand for transparency on this matter. And I want to credit the Fayetteville Police Department in the days following this incident. They released a list of all the steps that they took during their internal investigation, and they were clear with the public about how many video recordings of the incident they obtained, what statements were made, what records were reviewed, who reviewed those records, and that is exactly what the FPD should be doing for any victim, human or otherwise. But in contrast to the K-9 incident, 10 months ago, in October 2023, Lawrence Artis allegedly shot and killed himself while in police custody while his hands were handcuffed behind his back. And as a reminder, this incident occurred the first day that ShotSpotter went live and led the police to that location. And since that incident happened, the FPD said that they were doing an internal investigation, and since it happened, there has not been any additional information released about the victim. And the Artis family still does not have any answers about what truly happened that night. And nine months ago, on Thanksgiving Day, DeMarcus Brody, who had a history of mental illness, was shot and killed by the FPD. And like Mr. Artis, hardly any new information has been released to the public since he was killed. All roads lead back to the need for independent oversight under the OCS, which is a pillar Fayetteville Freedom for All has been advocating for since the beginning of our OCS campaign. Independent oversight will help ensure greater trust and confidence between the community and officers, knowing that there's an independent third party reviewing or investigating these incidents. It will help mitigate financial risks to the city and to taxpayers when lawsuits are filed against the officers of the cities, and it will ensure the public receives information and updates about incidents in a timely manner. And speaking of updates, I hope we can get an update soon on the hiring of a Director of the OCS. I know applications closed in April, and it is now August, so I would love an update on that. And lastly, in closing, I know a lot of neighborhoods experienced flooding during this past hurricane. I just wanted to throw an idea out to you guys. There's a lot of cities who are having initiatives where they rip out grass on city properties and planting native plants instead to soak up all that floodwater. So it just might be something that the city might want to look into, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Sean McMillan.
Mr. McMillan, good evening.
Good evening. Not everything that is faced can be changed, but nothing can be changed until it is faced. James Baldwin said that in 1962. Tonight, we're standing in solidarity with those calling for accountability following July's K-9 incident. We're also calling for a Sentinel review on this incident, as well as Sentinel reports on the police homicides of Jada Johnson and DeMarcus Brody. We're also calling for a council update on the video camera footage of the police-involved death of Lawrence Artis, as well as a Sentinel review of that fatal interaction. We're also requesting an update on the hiring of the OCS Director and more transparency around the hiring process. In July, Fayetteville residents responded with outrage to a police dog being punched in the face. For weeks, what seemed like thousands of people flooded social media platforms with calls for the police department to hold the officer involved accountable. There were many who were awakened to the reality that the FPD cannot and should never be trusted to police themselves. There is a need for independent oversight, but nothing can be changed until it is faced. For all of those who cared enough to call for systemic change on behalf of the physically assaulted dog, I ask you to consider the lack of accountability and transparency following the police homicides of Najee Higgins, Lawrence Graham, Shakira McNair, Joshua Oxendine, Adrian Roberts, Jada Johnson, Justin Lifes, and DeMarcus Brody. Nothing can be changed until it is faced. We appreciate the council's prioritization of the OCS and applaud tonight's call for a crisis intervention. We also call for this council to return independent oversight to its place as a pillar of the OCS. of the OCS. At a minimum, reinforce plans to hire a Nicole-Credentia OCS director along with a data specialist who examine interactions between law enforcement and the community at multiple points along the continuum of justice. I share a belief that the moral arc that Dr. King referenced, and I believe that it will indeed bend toward justice. There will be independent oversight in Fayetteville. It's a matter of time. The city of Philadelphia established its first police review board in 1958. Noble implored the city to establish independent oversight in 2012. But I also ascribe to King's assertion that change does not roll in on the wheels of inevitability, but comes through continuous struggle. Many of us elect you with the hope that you will enact the type of change that hastens our journey on this moral arc to justice, and feel betrayed when you act in ways that seem to uphold a wicked and unjust status quo. Nothing can be changed until it is faced. I implore you to lead in facing what must be changed. Independent oversight now, all of us or none. Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Channing Perdue. Mrs. Channing Perdue? Not present? Our next speaker is Ms. Christina Mathis.
Good evening, Ms. Mathis.
Good evening. Good evening, Ms. Mayor Colvin and council members. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Christina Mathis, and I'm here on behalf of PETA, People for the Ethical Treatment of Animals, and are more than 4,600 members and supporters in the city of Fayetteville and Cumberland County. I am here today to encourage you to approve the public release of video footage recorded by Fayetteville Police Department, body worn and vehicle cameras during a traffic stop on June 23rd, when a police officer was filmed by a bystander punching his working K-9 in the face, reportedly as many as seven times. Resistance to releasing the body camera footage can only mean that there is something to hide. Thus far, the police has been permitted to police itself, and the public has no answers. The police department has not responded to inquiries from concerned individuals, including the taxpayers who fund its existence. Now is the time to share the raw video, as well as details of training and certifications, if any, that the police officer in the video possesses. Now is also the time to ensure that an independent body conducts an investigation of what occurred and into the training and treatment of canines at the Fayetteville Police Department. In 2021, a similar incident occurred two hours away in Salisbury, where an unaffiliated agency was retained to investigate, and ultimately, the department moved to terminate the abusive police officer who chose to resign. Canines used for patrol work, like half-traffic stops, are trained to bite. If they bite someone who's not the intended target, it means they're overstimulated, anxious, confused, or afraid of the person. Even if this dog bit the officer, no canine behavior expert would agree that violently and repeatedly punching a dog in the face is an appropriate response. It is the response of someone who has no idea how to handle a dog and is unacceptable. And if the police department's position is that it is acceptable to beat one of its own canines, then constituents deserve to know how these animals, who cost taxpayers tens of thousands of dollars, are trained and treated. If this incident is any indication, then there is reason for grave concern. Transparency is the first step. Thank you for listening to me. I appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Yuta King.
Good evening, Ms. King.
Oh, I'm so short. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of the K-9 police dog. My name is Yuta King, and I'm a dog trainer and specialized in dog behavior for over 20 years. I talk from a trainer's point of view about this case. A dog can only do what he has been taught. Dogs have no concept of right or wrong. It is non-existent in a dog's mind. From the dog's point of view, he was working and doing his job. There are many factors why a dog can fail, and one of them is using harsh training methods like yelling, screaming, hitting, and using harsh training equipments. These dogs are under enormous stress and can even suffer from PTSD. Depends on the dog's state of mind and upbringing. That day, the dog was either confused or made a mistake and failed, but not caused by the dog, but caused by his handler, who failed his dog. Miscommunication and lack of kind and proper training between the handler and the dog can be very confusing to the dog. The dog relies completely on his handler. Training a dog is teamwork, a partnership, based on mutual trust and respect and understanding. No living being can be forced or bullied into performance or submission. It will only create fear of the handler or owner, distrust, anxieties, retaliation, and aggression. To prevent this from happening again, the whole video should be used as a learning tool. The officer lost control and became so enraged that he fisted the dog seven times in the face or head, strung him up into the air, the whole time walking fast to his car. I also believe that the officer's body cam footage should be released to the public and not faulting the dog. We, the people of Fayetteville, would like to know where the dog is and what his future holds. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, our final speaker is Mr. Enrique Murillo.
Ranger Rick. How you doing?
I'm good, sir. How are you?
Good.
Here to talk about my organization, Through Tragedy Comes Light. Ms. Jensen, thank you for laying out our timeline. September 7th, 11:00 AM, Festival Park. I'll give you our mission statement. Our mission for the MAN22 Suicide Awareness Run is to promote mental health, prevent suicides, and support the well-being of military personnel, veterans, and first responders. We strive to reduce the stigma, increase access to resources, and foster a culture of empathy and support. Through education, advocacy, and collaboration, we aim to save lives and create resilient community that values mental health and wellness. Military suicide prevention is an important aspect of supporting the mental health and well-being of service members. The unique challenges and stressors associated with the military service can increase the risk of suicide among military personnel. To address this issue, several strategies and programs have been implemented by military organizations. The MAN22 event is conducted to raise not only awareness, but also resources for those who are in need of them, as well as their family members. First responders, including police officers, firefighters, paramedics, and other emergency personnel, are often exposed to traumatic events and high-level stress in the line of duty. Unfortunately, these factors cannot contribute to an increased risk of mental health challenges, including depression, anxiety, and even suicidal ideation. Suicide prevention among the first responders is crucial to the mental health of them. Military and first responders, suicide awareness is a critical issue that deserves attention and support. These professions often face high levels of stress, trauma, operational demands, which can contribute to mental health challenges and increase the risk of suicide. Creating awareness and implementing the effective strategies to address these issues are crucial in supporting the well-being of those who serve our communities and nation. We at Through Tragedy Comes Light organization want to make mental health wellness known as well as remembered to those we lost to the battle of mental health. Again, we greatly appreciate your support for this cause in raising awareness for mental health. I'd like to close out that we have been doing this run for nine years. We did three years at Hope Mills Road, four years in Rayford. We brought it to the city. We brought it to the city last year, thanks to the city council, the police department, the fire chief, and everybody. And we had about 1,500-foot traffic there. When I started it nine years ago, we had 55 people show up. 55 people compared to 1,500. Those numbers are important when it comes to the visibility of suicide. But what number really matters is the one life that we can save, and that's what matters, and that's what matters to this country, this great city. And we got to start with the foundation of this city and making it better. In 2022, the leading cause of death for a 10-year-old was suicide in America, according to the American Association of Suicideology. Thank you. God bless America.
Mayor, we have no further speakers.
All right. Well, thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you to all of our speakers for tonight. So council, as we move into 8.0A, the consent will entertain a motion. Councilmember Benevente.
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. I move that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of item 8.0A15, City of Fayetteville School Resource Officer and Traffic Control Officer Contract.
All right. There's a motion by Councilmember Benevente to approve with the exception of 8.0A15. Is there a second by Councilmember Hondros? Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. All right, Madam Clerk, is unanimous. Motion carries. Councilmember Benevente, 8.0A15.
Mayor Colvin, I didn't know if our city manager wanted, just to give us an update of where we are, and I certainly would have commentary on that.
All right, Mr. Hewitt. This is the contract pertaining to SROs and school resource officers and traffic control officers with the city of Fayetteville.
I know, Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Benevente and others, as shared briefly during the comment section, we've been quite busy, and I'd like to thank the police chief, and particularly our city attorney, for helping execute council's wishes, which were two separate agreements, one for SROs and one for TCOs. The SROs, that contract that we have in place, will provide us on August 26th with six SROs that will be assigned to roam the nine high schools that we have in the city of Fayetteville. Starting on January 1st of 2025, we hope to hire an additional three SROs, so that by January 1st of 2025, we will have one SRO at each of the high schools. Our agreement makes very clear with the county school system, Cumberland County School System, that given recruitment issues, staffing concerns, that we will not have a complement of SROs that will be able to work exclusively in the elementary and middle schools. And so we'll be talking to them at council's question upstairs as to how they plan to handle the security needs at the elementary and middle schools. As always, though, if 911 is called or there's an emergency, then the Fayetteville Police Department will show up, but it will not be with, at the middle schools and elementary schools, having an SRO there Monday through Friday during the school day. As it relates to the TCOs or traffic control officers, the police chief who was here, Chief Brayden, reports that we have hired 40 of the 66 TCOs needed, and that we have another 20 that are slated to begin work on August 19th. And so we are but then be six short of our contracted goal of 66 TCO officers to work the traffic control in the mornings and the afternoon at the 49 different schools within the city limits of Fayetteville. Since this agreement was inked, there has been some interest in some of the private schools who have reached out to us as well and have asked if there was an opportunity for us to extend these same services to some of the private schools. And the need is great, and the interest is great as well. But our focus is on honoring council's wishes, which are for this initial year. And over the next couple of days and weeks, we'll be working with the mayor, Mayor Protem, to develop a process to, again, meeting with the county school board and staff, again, to look at a longer, more durable agreement that will include additional elements that the council identified when you authorized this contract, one-year contract in July of, well, last month. I'm happy to answer any questions, and as I said, the city attorney has been most instrumental, and she can assist in this as well. As can Chief Brayden if there are additional questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hewitt. Councilmember Benevente.
Well, I certainly wanted to leave it open to council members if they had any questions for City Mayor Hewitt, and then I would make a motion that I'll make my comments during the discussion portion of. If I had one question for City Mayor Hewitt based on what he just shared, what sort of impact is the deficit? The city of Fayetteville already has a deficit when it comes to the expectations of services we provide as a police, for our, to police department, of, I think, 80 to 100 officers at this point. How is this additional request for service from the school board impacting that number?
The council authorized, if you continue the contract as anticipated, in the subsequent school years, we would be looking at trying to hire up to 24 SROs for the nine high schools, 10 middle schools, and then roving elementary schools. But that would be a separate agreement that the council would ratify, we hope, sometime in January or February, if we reach that deal.
Hey, Chief, you want to add to that?
No, the manager pretty much stated everything that we've done up to date. We just graduated eight total certified SROs from the Salemburg, as posted on our Facebook page. So we have the six that we were obligated to have come the start of school year. We are on track. We have 40 hired. We're working with HR. Remember, this has been an expedited process. We've had several hiring workshops to ensure we were able to hire TCOs by the start of school on August 26th. Unfortunately, we have to process those in batches, and we're hoping to have the final ones to meet our 66 hired by the 19th. So we would be starting in compliance with what we, to our agreement of providing six SROs and a total of 66 TCOs.
I guess what I'm trying to understand is, before any of this came to your desk, and you just had the mission of, you know, this year's budget saying, "We need to get our current ranks just for the services you already provide," what was that number deficit currently before this additional request?
And it fluctuated from day to day. The average was about, we were sitting right at 80.
And has this sort of new, more urgent mission sort of stopped you from doing that part of it, or what sort of impact has it had that you've had to sort of add this new additional request to your recruiting efforts?
So that was all, those conversations were held throughout this process of drafting this agreement. You know, the agreement that say that I would have six ready to go by the start of the school year was made, not just as a number pulled out of the air, as what we could actually afford to have and get certified and get through the SRO school. There's no doubt, we still have vacancies across the board. We still continue to manage those as well. But, so, I guess the question you're asking, does it make the job harder? Yes, you know, when you add 23 positions, it's naturally going to add to some of those stressors, but we've come up with plans, our recruiting plan. Once the pay plan goes into effect at the end of this month, I think that'll have great impact on our recruiting and potential for lateral hires.
So instead of 80, are you saying that the number is really an additional 23? So now the new number is 103 as far as our deficit for all the services we're trying to provide?
If you're adding in the additional 23 for the SROs, correct. You add that to what we were, our vacancy rate was prior to.
Is there no other questions? I'm prepared to make a motion.
Yeah, I did want to follow up on something to put this in a little bit more context with Chief. Because the sheriff's office ended the service of providing it, those who worked in that unit, particularly on the TCO side, you were able to do 40 hires, pretty much, a lot of those, or a high percentage of those, were previously working for the sheriff's office?
Correction. Yeah, correct. We, that was our first offer, plus we also placed it out for an open application process for others, and we had a total of 90 applicants across the board for the position. So that was to include any of the 66 that were interested in switching over to the city.
So theoretically, you could receive some lateral hires that are already gone through, BLE, was it, Basic Law Enforcement Training and all of that? Not TCOs, not talking about SROs.
Okay, so SROs...
So it's the same concept, that just like you had people who worked for the sheriff's department that did T traffic, I know they were a separate unit. that did T traffic, I know they were a separate unit. But they may have officers who were just used to being SROs that may be interested. So it's not like you need to find a brand-new group of people that may have to go through the academy. They may, but the potential is that you could have some lateral transfers as well, right?
So yes, remember, one of the specifications and recommendations for an SRO position is that it's not a brand-new officer. If you look at the six that we've dedicated to the program so far, they each have two years or more experience on the police department. And if we were to hire laterals in, which we are hiring laterals, that is part of our recruiting campaign, that yes, we are seeking anyone that has SRO experience that we could bring over and potentially put to work.
All right, thank you. All right. Councilmember Green. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Thompson and Ben Green.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, I just had one question, because you brought up about being short six TCOs. Will those officers be covering those positions? Because as we know, we don't have school connectivity for sidewalks. And it's imperative that our kids get to and from school in a safety manner.
So, yes, we have 20 that are prepared to be hired. We're hoping before the 19th that we are able to fill those final six positions as well. Like I said, we had 90 total applicants. You know, some have been processed out, taken out of the process due to one reason or another. But we're pretty confident, fairly confident, we'll have the 66 by the hiring date of the 19th. If you're on the way in earlier tonight, you saw that we had people crossing the street out here to the, to the baseball field. That was the group that is already hired, that was out there doing their training with our traffic control officers out there today. So we fully planned, and you know, Major Hunt, correct me if I'm wrong, to have our 66 hired by the 19th. I can only confirm that we're up to the number 60 right now. 56.
Thank you, Chief.
All right. Councilmember McGreen, you had some?
Yes, I did. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've discussed this multiple times in multiple different formats. We've been at a had-it-at-work session. We've had several different meetings in different forums to discuss this once we knew the decisions that the sheriff made. I think we've all know of the need here. There's no discussion that there's a need for the safety of our students. I think the question for a lot of us was, in the beginning, what impact does that have on our budget? And what impact does that have on the chief and his staff? I think we've answered that. I think the chief has answered that repeatedly. And we kind of quelled some of the questions that we had by limiting the contract to a one-year contract rather than extending ourselves beyond what we knew. We felt like a one-year contract was a good starting place to make sure that we understood what county schools need and they understood what we were willing to provide. So in that, I would like to make a motion that we approve the contracts for the City of Fayetteville School Resource Officers and the traffic control officers.
All right. There's a motion by Councilmember Green, and second by Councilmember Maher. Discussion, Councilmember Benevente.
I suppose that's the way we can do it, then. I mean, I'd requested an opportunity to make a motion, but I'll let it go. If we're in the discussion phase now, I just want to communicate once more some very serious concerns that I have about the current state of this agreement. The fact that it's only one year, the fact that they're, you know, the school board says they'll pay for TCOs up until a certain point. We know what the ultimate demand is, that the City of Fayetteville take on the SRO program indefinitely. And this idea that we're only going to do it for a year and then we'll see, I think that's a dubious proposition, because we'll essentially be in the same situation the sheriff was, pulling the rug from underneath Cumberland County Schools and the parents and the students of this community if we suddenly pretend like we're going to not provide the service if we don't get everything we want. So, I mean, just in terms of negotiation, I think the City of Fayetteville is doing a very poor job currently in negotiating what's best for the citizens of Fayetteville. Because for 30 years, Cumberland County Schools, funded by the Cumberland County Commissioners, who were dealing with services through the Cumberland County Sheriff, for the first time in all that time, that entire understanding has shifted. And I don't think people are giving that the weight that it deserves. I don't think our council is giving it the weight that it deserves. And in some ways, the opportunity that it creates to do things better. For a long time, you know, people said that kids come to school misbehaving, doing the wrong thing, and they were being punished for it. And it turns out, a lot of these young people just weren't getting breakfast in the morning. All of a sudden, instead of making these disciplinary issues, they found the root of the issue was that these kids are just hungry and don't need to be referred to the SRO or referred for their behavior being something that ought to be sent to a juvenile court. It was, in fact, something that we could just get to the root of and address. Where is that, where are those concepts in this agreement? It's 2024. The idea that we're just going to do a uniform swap between the sheriff's department and the city police, I think is just a missed opportunity, to say the least. And I think there's a lot of data suggests that, in fact, it can actually be a dangerous proposition for our Cumberland County students. When you look at some of the data that our quarterly reports show as it relates to the police and some of the disparate impacts that we have, we know that already in Cumberland County Schools, black students are three times more likely than white students to receive suspensions, that 20%, 21% of all delinquency complaints are coming from our Cumberland County Schools and going to the courthouse. These are the school-to-prison pipeline concepts that, right now, the City of Fayetteville is ignoring. And instead of addressing them, we're just saying, we'll do a palette swap, one uniform for another. We're not going to think any deeper about the ways that we can have a positive impact on how we address school safety moving forward. Because, believe it or not, the City of Fayetteville is now in the school business. The politicians will try and shift that and say, this is just between the school board and the county to fight over monies. It's really not. Because now the citizens of Fayetteville, your tax money that should be going to filling our officers and actually going to the services that you'd normally pay for, are now being abdicated by monies that the county is no longer paying, that we're going to have to start paying. That's twice the taxation for half the services, as far as I'm concerned. But no one's really talking about it in those terms. I don't think that we've done enough to engage our county commissioners in conversation about exactly what this relationship looks like now that the city's involved. And I don't think the school board has really come to a consensus about the fact that they're going to have a lot more cooks in the kitchen moving forward as it relates to public safety. So I'm going to be voting against this, not because I don't think there's a role for the City of Fayetteville in all this. I just think the role needs to be much more thoughtful than simply just putting the cops in the classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Benevente. And council, as we, as we prepare to vote, thankfully for the listening audience, they understand that they vote for a body that governs the policies and the operations of the school system called the school board. An election is taking place now. So we, the city council, was presented and questioned to ask to provide some help and support for the school system in the SRO department. We weren't asked to supply cafeteria workers or counselors or nurses, all of which are great needs in our school system. But the governing body made a specific request that this council is considering now with this, with this agreement for one year. And they agreed to reimburse fully any of the costs associated with that. And just for the record, all of it is taxpayer dollars. Whether it's the money that goes to the school boards through the counties, taxpayer dollars, or whether it comes to the city, it's all public dollars that are used for public service rendering. So just, just want to be conscious of that. But I'll go to Councilmember Mahandros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mentioned it before, and I'll state it here. You know, when it comes to economic development and everything we're trying to do from moving the city forward, transit, planning, the one thing that we can't really affect change on is schools. And that's the one thing that, when we're trying to recruit, recruit new industry, our partners at FCDC and others, and when we're trying to do a lot of things, we're trying to do, the one major factor that we have no control over is schools. So as my colleague stated, and as you stated, Mr. Mayor, we've been asked to provide a service, which is SROs and TCOs. So we're getting into the school business, whether we invited it on ourselves or whether we were taking the invitation that was provided to us. I think it is an opportunity to have a larger conversation. And as I mentioned upstairs, I remember my first two, three years of schools, it was Fayetteville City Schools. So if we really wanted to affect change, we talk about OCS, we talk about conflict resolution and violence interrupters. The way to do that is, is to control the school system. So if we're going to do this, and we're hamstrung on how, we're not providing the SRO and TCO level of service that we want because we're dictated by the contract from the school system, I think it's wise to have a larger conversation and actually consider getting into Fayetteville City Schools where we could provide the level of service that the citizens of Fayetteville and Cumberland County want.
Thank you, Councilmember Mahandros. All right, council, I'll look to you for action on this motion. All right. Madam Clerk, that is eight to two of those voting opposition. Councilmember Mahandros and Benevente, motion carries. Thank you, Chief, for the quick, quick work. And thank you to city staff and to, for working to get these, meet these deadlines. All right, council, moving to the public hearings. This time, we're going to hold hearings where the city council formally seeks your input. Individuals desiring to speak in the hearing must have signed up to speak and with the city clerk by name and address prior to the start of tonight's meeting. We will begin with the staff presentation, then we will move into the formal hearings. 15 minutes will be allowed for those in favor and those opposed for the items discussed during the hearing. Individual speakers will be limited to three minutes each, unless by previous arrangement, a single spokesperson is designated, in which case the spokesperson may use the entire 15 minutes. When the clerk calls your name, we ask that you please come to the podium. Please clearly state your name and address for the record. You may then begin to address the council. When the light changes from green to amber, you have 30 seconds remaining, and the timer will ring at the end of your time. So with that, I'll give way to, I guess this will be Mr. Colley.
Good evening, sir.
Evening, Mayor, City Council. Chris Colley with Economic Community Development. So before you tonight is largely a paperwork and regulatory process. The IRS has, has a regulation in its code. So for projects that really help out communities, like essential housing, like hospitals, power plants, things like that, they require the local governing board to approve a resolution saying that that project makes sense in your community. And then that allows private developers to access really good interest rates and lending models. And so we have two projects that have currently been underway in our community. Back in December of 2022, they came before you for this same process. As they go through those processes and access financing, there's a one-year time limit that that approval is good for. And so that one year has come and gone. So we're in front of you tonight to ask you to hold another public hearing for the IRS tax compliance purpose. At the end of that public hearing, to ultimately vote to, and follow staff's recommendation, which is to approve a resolution so that good homes and their private development partners can continue the great work that they've been doing on their two developments here and be able to access those financing terms. So I'll take any questions you have. If not, we can move right to the public hearing.
All right. Mr. Colley, I don't see any. So we'll, we'll move. So with that, we'll open the public hearing. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, we have no speakers for this item.
All right. So with that, we'll, we'll close the hearing. All right. Councilmember Maher, is that a motion?
Sure. Yes, sir, Mayor. I, I move, I move to...
Oh, well, this was just a hearing, so you don't need anything, huh? Oh, well, we do need a resolution.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry for the confusion there. This is a kind of a paperwork item, so we didn't do a presentation. We will be looking for a, a motion to approve a resolution.
Yes, sir. That's what, okay, Mayor, then I move to approve a resolution.
All right. There's a motion by Councilmember Maher. And Madam Clerk, our screen says something different than this item. This is about the previous item, I believe. Then 8.0A is what mine says. Yeah, I can, I closed it.
It's 901, right?
All right, now we'll redo it. All right. There's a motion by Councilmember Maher. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Davis to approve the resolution as stated. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. All right. Madam Clerk, that motion carries unanimously. Motion's approved. And I see Mr. David Mitchell back there. Thank you, sir. You're making substantial improvements and investments in the community, bringing housing, workforce options for people in our community. We appreciate that. Thank you. All right, council, we move to item 9.02, the adoption of substantial amendments to the Housing and Urban Development Consolidated Plan. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council, City Manager. I've been asked to speak with you about the need for our hearing this evening. I do have a PowerPoint that I need to go over with you briefly. So I'm here to talk to you about the two substant, the one substantial amendment to allow two activities. One is to accept a, a emergency solutions grant. And the second one is to change our funding source to expand our homebuyer program. Both of these activities require changes to two plans. One, our consolidated five-year plan, as it has to include all anticipated income. And the second one is our annual action plan that you approved in April. After you approved that, on April 22nd, we received word from HUD that we were a new entitlement for emergency solutions grant. And so that $155,000 needs to be in this year's budget for us to expand that. Again, the $200,000 we're proposing moving from home partnership affordable development to homebuyers assistance. And that $200,000 will allow residents to access down payment assistance without the match. And so that's, that's pretty important for us, removing one more barrier. With ESG, we can do some activities to create stability in permanent housing, such as street outreach, shelter, homeless prevention, rapid rehousing, and homeless management information system. We did a survey. Out of that survey, homeless prevention and rapid rehousing was the top. And the second was strengthening our emergency shelter services. So the next steps for tonight would be to hold the public hearing, allow us, after the hearing, to move forward. We're submitting our plan and then issuing a NOFA for our ESG partners so that we can get some of that money out the door. So here's our staff recommendations, and I'm here to take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Don't see any questions at the moment. All right. So I guess with that, we will open the public hearing. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, we have no speakers for this item.
All right. So with that, we'll close the public hearing. And I'll go to Councilmember Maher.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make the motion, but as I said during our work session, thumbs up to this program, thumbs up to improving and expanding our scope as far as adding an additional group, especially for our first-time homebuyers. I really, really do like this program. If I could, I'd like to move to adopt the substantial amendments to the Housing and the Urban Development Plan 2020 to 2024 and the consolidation plan for '24 to '25 action, annual action plan.
All right. There's a motion by Councilmember Maher. Is that second by Councilmember Benevente? Discussion on this, again, I want to echo, kudos to your department, Mr. Baker, Mr. Colley. Council had supported the effort to kind of create more homeownership here. I think adding this down payment assistance and want to let the listening public know that this is something that's been expanded, not only to people who work for the City of Fayetteville, but also Cumberland County EMS and the hospital, is that right?
That's correct, and as well as the school system.
And the schools. So if you're an employee in any of those spaces, please reach out to our community Economic Development Department and find out how it is that we can help you buy your first home. So we appreciate that. All right. So council, any other discussion on the motion? All right. Look to you for your votes. All right. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Baker. All right. Council, moving to 10.01. I'll go to the city attorney. Attorney Pullman?
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. This is before council for consideration pursuant to Councilmember Benevente's, Councilmember request at our work session this month. Council gave consensus to move this item forward, and so it is here for your consideration. At your discretion, Mayor, I'd ask that Councilmember Benevente restate his request for the council.
All right. Councilmember Benevente.
I move that we direct our city staff to petition Cumberland County Courts to release... to release the body cam footage incident related to the K-9 unit.
Alright, uh, that's a motion by Councilmember Benevente to request to the courts, uh, the K-9 footage, I mean, the video for the body cam from the K-9 incident. Is there a second? Se, second by Councilmember McNair? Oh, Andrew, okay, well, I didn't, I didn't tell you. Councilmember McNair. Alright, so that's a motion by Councilmember Benevente, seconded by Councilmember McNair. Discussion on the motion. Madam Attorney, just for clarity for those listening, uh, this is the council making a petition to the courts, uh, to do it, but the final decision will rely upon, uh, the judge, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure that the audience understands the process.
Yes, sir. The city will, um, actually, these actions require the city to sue itself. Um, and then the judge, if it, uh, the judge sees fit, will schedule a hearing. There will be a hearing on the matter and then the judge will decide if, if the city can release it or not.
Alright, well, since we're suing ourselves, who pays the legal fees?
The taxpayers.
Alright, so, um, alright, Council. Councilmember Benevente, you, you made the motion. That's not a discussion?
No, sir. I mean, I don't think, I think we've discussed it upstairs. I think we had, um, really important commentary from our community on this matter. And I think it's, uh, our duty to be, uh, transparent and, uh, hold ourselves accountable.
Alright, alright, Council, I'll look to you for your votes. Oh, Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question. Where would this video, is this going to be on social media? Where would this video circulate?
So, uh, Madam Attorney, that is a good point. There are a number of, uh, petitions or, or specifics that go with that. So, one is to, to view the video by Councilmember to release it for view. And the other one is to release to the public. Can you explain that a little bit?
Yes, sir. So, this petition, um, pursuant to the request would be for release, which is to release a copy of the recording. Um, the judge would decide, um, in what manner that should occur, if it should occur.
Okay, I was just curious, like, where would it show on, I mean?
It's a very good question. And, um, Police Attorney Josh Hall is here. We'll make sure we, um, get some clarity on that from the court at the correct time.
Thank you.
Alright, Council, I'll look to you for your votes. There are no further questions. Alright, Madam Clerk, that motion is eight to two. Uh, those voting opposed, uh, Councilmember Thompson and Mayor Protim Jensen. Alright, motion carries. Alright, Councilmember? Hold on, uh, you got, you got a, a separate motion? Uh, alright, I need to go to Councilmember McNair and I'll circle back to you.
Yes, I would like to, uh, have 11, 11.03 moved to a work session, um, to, um, have, uh, staff to come back with more information, um, because we didn't get the opportunity to hear what went on between the county and the city liaison. But after reading, um, the report in the City View newspaper, I was not satisfied, because we didn't get a chance to, um, hear what was going on between the two, um, communities.
Alright, that's a motion by Councilmember McNair. Is there a second?
Mayor Colvin, I'll second it. That was going to be my motion.
Okay, alright, seconded by Councilmember Benevente, uh, to move this item. And so, Council, as we discussed, just to bring the public up to speed, uh, the council did give a consensus a few work sessions back to, uh, have staff reach out to, uh, the county as well as distinctly Fayetteville and some of the other community partners, uh, who, um, were not necessarily, uh, in a position to move forward at this time with that. But the motion is to take this back to a work session, uh, as stated. And so, uh, Mayor Protim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I, I would like to say during the city-county liaison meeting, the county did address this to us. And what they had told us was that they are very interested in working with us and working with the hospitals and everybody involved for an aquatic center for us in this county and this region. And with that, they said that they could not do both. And that they were, they really wanted to put their efforts and their time and their monies into the aquatic center. So, um, that's what was said at the meeting. And we had gotten that basically from the, um, TDA and everything else. So, I, it's not that I don't support, but we did what we were told to do. And we went out to the county and they said, you know, it was an either, it was an either or. And our residents have said many of times and have come up to council saying how much they do want an aquatic center. So, thank you.
Alright, uh, Councilmember Herron and Banks McGlaughlin.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I think my question may, the response may have just been answered because what I asked upstairs in our pre-meeting, what were the responses back for the, from the two entities that this had gone to? And I think it was the county and what was the other?
Distinctly Fayetteville, the Visitors Bureau. I think Jody answered that upstairs, but-
Yes, but if she could just give a response once more, so the public knows what we know.
Put me on the spot, Miss Jody. Ready for us?
It's alright.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We did, after the work session, reach out to the partners as indicated. After Mr. Van Gians presented this item, that included the county distinctly Fayetteville, TDA. We also reached out and offered discussions to the chamber and Arts Council and other community partners. Did they answer your questions?
No, he wants to hear what the outcome-
Yeah, I want to hear what their response was.
Sure. Well, at the city-county liaison meeting, most of the partners, um, said that they had resource and capacity challenges at the moment, right? And so, they wanted to, interested, great idea, thought about it. Distinctly Fayetteville also, uh, found a study, the similar study that was completed in 1999 that was not pursued at that time as well. So, we reviewed that and talked about that. Um, they sent it in the meeting. The county staff asked that we send it to the city-county liaison meeting, which we did. We talked about it there. And at that time, it was, as Ms. Jensen said, an either or. They had interest in the aquatic center and resource and capacity to pursue both.
Thank you.
Helpful?
Thank you. Alright, Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin, you had a question?
Yes, um, I wasn't able to attend the liaison meeting. But, um, I would love, is there some meeting minutes, um, that staff can provide us with or something in writing? Because I know, I want to say sometime last year, I brought up a motion, um, of full support for an aquatic center and was told that, um, the other parties didn't have an appetite for it. So, I'll be interested in seeing some minutes saying that they are in support of an aquatic center.
Madam Clerk, you have minutes from that meeting, right?
Yes, sir. Minutes were created for that meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, alright, Council, look to you for your votes to send this to the work session. Who we miss? Alright, Madam Clerk, that motion fails. Those voting, uh, in favor, uh, went away too fast, but, alright, those voting, uh, in favor of the motion was Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin, Davis, uh, Benevente, and McNair. Others voting against. Alright, all of you still adjourned? Alright, y'all have a good evening.